Well, we'll be looking for some literacy committee updates from.
There you go. Updates. Yeah, you should see all the homework he gave us.
If you're not doing anything tomorrow and you want to stop in.
Big request is he feeding you?
Not tomorrow.
Tomorrow and tomorrow.
So Barnstead members, the Alton Board's actually holding a brief meeting now, which is why people are still sitting. And we'll see you for Barnstead's February meeting here tomorrow at five. Just before the girls playoff game.
It'll be a brief meeting? My report tomorrow has one item on it.
Can I see the signatures? Carol, thank you. I know I'll see you.
Oh, I'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I'm sure we'll bump into each other.
Tim, do we get to see that chemical safety plan?
You can see it when you want. Do you have the chemical safety plan?
Was it not in that packet?
No.
It's referred to but not in your packet?
It's referred that we want there to be a plan, but I've never seen the plan.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, so we don't.
But it's not in the plan.
We don't bring that stuff to a board unless the regulation or the law requires it to be approved by the board, unless you ask for it, which is fine. Like you can.
That's what I did at work.
You can see any document. Do you want to write it?
Do I want to write it?
You just said it's.
I mean, you have no idea.
I once.
A big oil, a big oil HSE is not to play lightly with.
Well, I was just forwarding. I didn't have.
Yeah.
You must have like shelves above.
They're all online, but yeah.
It's fine. Either way, I mean, I think it's.
I didn't know that you had asked Janice to call me about those emails.
I'm curious.
That's something I feel like that I couldn't have known about. I didn't know that that was happening. And I was on that email and I kind of felt a little off guard that that happened and I didn't think about it.
It may be that the policy and the law required the board approve these things like the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't. I mean, there were just a lot of emails and I just, some of it I thought that Janice did. Nope, no gavel needed. No gavel needed. All right, let's call this meeting to order. Timothy, we're calling this meeting to order. That's right. Okay, roll call.
Christine Wood.
Matt Chisokis.
Carol Locke.
Tim Rutter.
Heidi Dufresne.
Lauren Ferrochio.
Anne Pierce. All right, let's call, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda review.
I make a motion that we accept the agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I need to approve the minutes from February first, 2025, predeliberative meeting minutes.
I make a motion we approve February first, 2025 deliberative minutes.
Second.
All, in favor? Sorry. Any opposed? Okay, public input? Open?
Similar to mine.
Public input closed. All right, we have action items. The first one is the Alton Central School. And in front of you, and I believe Lauren also forwarded you some concerns from parents about, some of it is about next year's calendar and the start date, and others of it is about the end of this school year. And one goes more into depth about a lot of issues.
It were, yeah.
So.
My take is that perhaps the survey should have gone out sooner. It's what I, one of my takeaways from reading all these letters is the survey went out the day before our meeting and I think parents were objecting. And I, I get it. I mean, Amber did hers in front of me. It was a quick little survey. Middle school parents kind of have a different attitude than elementary parents. You know, like she didn't really care when the open house was because she recognized that younger parents wanted it the night before or before the opening of school. So she wrote in the survey, yes, to that option. But not everyone's going to think that way. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think one of the parents actually made a good, a good point in here, if I can reference this. And I'm going to paraphrase because I can't find it exactly, but basically she said that she used to think that they were for her. The open houses were for her and then she thought that they were also for her kids to ease anxiety. So.
Right.
And I mean, we're, we're all for the open house being before school. I think we were just trying to accommodate as many people as possible. That's.
So we had talked about at the deliberative session, we were going to start school the Tuesday, maybe have the open house the Thursday, the week before. Lauren, what's your, and Christie, you're both are parents in that school and Eric too. What, what is your feeling? Yeah, keep forgetting about you, Eric, sorry. How old is your little guy?
Uh, he's in preschool right now.
Preschool. Well, it's still important. Preschool's important.
Still important, yeah. So, yeah, I guess I'd like to hear from the people that are directly in effects.
Do you have the results of the survey?
Matt does.
Yeah, so we had, there was 172 responses. Of that, 86% of the respondents favored starting school after Labor Day. And 68.6, to be exact, the open house prior to the first day. So. So about 41% of our, of our parents did respond in that period of time.
And, and the, so the Thursday night open house, Tuesday first day, is what the school has done about half of the last 12 or 15 years. And starting school prior to Labor Day is what the school has done about the other half of the last 12 to 15 years. And there are minutes from board meetings having the same conversation. Like, so this is pretty normal and it's easy for us to do either way. And Labor doesn't object because they've done it both ways.
These have a big cookout, I think, when in younger years.
For the open house night?
Yeah, for open house night, these have an outdoor cook, a cookout. And then parents could circulate a little bit better so that they'd have a cookout outside. Kids would be on the playground. Parents would meet the teachers there as well as in the classrooms. It was a little more casual, I think. It wasn't quite as structured. So, and also during open house, I've gone before with the kids where it's just so crowded to get through the hallways. So that's how they solved that problem back then. It's kind of a nice way to start the school year.
Does Janice organize all the open house stuff or is it more something from you guys?
No, Janice will do it once we decide. Right, but that sounds very appealing to me.
Yeah, I, I remember there being food there. When my daughter was there, I think she started before Labor Day. And the open house was the week, was that week before Labor Day? Then they started before Labor Day. I, I mean, honestly though, if that's what parents would like and that's what works for them, then that's fine with me. I'm.
As a teacher, when we have the open house later in September and October, we found that parents wanted a conference about grades. And that's why we in Gilmington switched it before the opening of school because we, that wasn't the purpose of the open house. We had conferences to do that with. So that's one of the reasons it got switched over in a lot of schools because parents, of course they're anxious about the grades. Of course, you guys have Power School now. We didn't have that. We didn't have electronic stuff. But it does make a difference.
Carol, one of the parents also, excuse me for interrupting you, asked if there could be a before open house with the possibility of mid-year and an open house sort of event every trimester. That's something that would have to be negotiated with the.
Right.
Bingo.
With the, just to clarify.
You have negotiated with the teachers that they will attend this open house.
Right. You're asking teachers to, to work outside of contracted hours. So to include events like that would need to be negotiated. But I do want to encourage parents that if they would like to schedule a conference, that that can be done at any time, on any day. All they have to do is reach out to the school, the counselor, the principal. So I mean, that's, that's always an option. But to have an all-school event would need to be negotiated. That was in addition to the beginning of school open house.
But teachers are at workshops the week before Labor Day, right?
So we have two professional days by contract prior to the beginning of the school year. And one thing that's on the option two draft before you that may or may not survive to the next option draft we give you is those two workshop days show up on Tuesday and Wednesday with the open house on Thursday. Well, traditionally, the open house when it's Thursday evening, that has been the second of those two professional days. So you might see a draft of this where those are proposed for Wednesday and Thursday instead of Tuesday and Wednesday, those two teacher workdays.
Yeah.
That's a nice concession.
The only thing it changes here, and we have done this both ways, so it is another thing we can handle, is in a lot of, I don't want to use the word district because we're not a district, but if you were in a school district where a speaker were coming in to do a kickoff meeting with all faculty, everyone would have the same first day and they would go to the same place, to that auditorium, and they would have that, that kickoff event. If we have high school teachers starting on Tuesday, having a professional day Wednesday, and then freshman orientation Thursday, but we have elementary teachers starting with a professional day on Wednesday, then a professional day on Thursday with the open house, it just means that we use the, and we've done this, we can do this, we use that middle day when they overlap to do that kickoff event. So the high school teachers have actually already been at work for a day. But again, we've done it, we can do it.
I do like having the common times for all three schools, whether it's the beginning of the year or the end of the year. I think that that informal collaboration is really valuable, especially when you have to go further, sit down and have those hard conversations about transition and kids readiness for high school. I think when you've had that collectiveness of having those, those days together so that people get to know each other.
I'm finding that on the literacy committee. I think people are getting to know each other pretty well at this point, which is good.
Yeah, I think it's super helpful and, and great for the staff. So that would be my only comment there.
But that's an administrative deal combining. I mean, I get that. So. But the other concern, so we, we've addressed the concern of the day before. I mean, we're going to have to ask Janice if she's going to issue a survey. She needs to give them more time if that's how she's, would you, is that your takeaway?
Yeah, and I would just ask that a survey have some context to, you know, in preparation for planning our calendar, have a little.
Preliminary information.
Information prefacing why we're asking these questions. And if there's any way to leave an open.
For them to.
Open text spot because there obviously were a lot of questions and I can understand, well, what does this mean? If I say yes, what am I A agreeing to or is this, how am I reading this question? Everyone reads it differently. So I know they can reach out and email, but it would be nice to have concerns and then we can kind of filter and see. This is a common thread that we're seeing everybody not understand. We need to communicate better or we need to address the issue.
It's just a matter of Janice recognizing now that if she's going to do a survey, preliminary information, introductory, and doing it sooner. That's all.
Yeah, and I'm sure, you know, she was just trying to simplify the, the survey, but.
Is she the one that sent the survey?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's not like we didn't get pretty clear results. I mean, 80 what percent?
Eighty-six.
Of respondents and about a 40%. During the height of the pandemic, when everybody had an opinion and we were surveying families on what they would prefer to see schools do, we were getting between 40 and 45% response rates to our surveys.
So that's a really good response rate.
It's about as good as it gets.
But we had a lot of people coming to school board meetings. I just want to say.
Oh, yes. Yes, we do.
Huge crowds during COVID.
And I think those COVID questionnaires were, you watered it down because there were so many questions.
Right.
So it, you know, there is a balance. There's.
There's a happy medium.
Two creating surveys.
Oh, there's definitely an art to creating surveys. The other concern they had was why weren't they talk, consulted about the early, in, you know, early start time for school? And I think that deserved recognition too because evidently they didn't quite understand that, in my mind, the kids are starting at the same time that they were the year before because I talked to Amber when she drops off cam and it's been 7:30 consistently. So, but now they're going to their classroom. So parents were concerned about that, but it was about discipline. There was a huge number of discipline issues in that gymnasium is what I noticed.
Yeah, I thought it provided more structure and supervision, uh, interaction in that way. I don't know.
No, that, that, those were the goals that Janice and teachers.
Right.
Yeah, and I also thought that this came from the teachers.
That this, so there is not a longstanding historical practice at ACS of kids hanging out in the gym for 20 minutes in the morning. It, it happened within the last
Right.
five years, something like that. We've been able to find no record of the board making a decision regarding that. We think it was a principal scheduling committee type decision, again, before we were superintendent and assistant superintendent, intended to give teachers additional PLC or prep time beyond what they already have in their schedules.
So you've talked about switching and having 2:30 dismissal, correct?
So I floated the idea to you at your last meeting. And I think if you want to talk more about this, you would want to go to non-public because it budges up against negotiations. It would be a negotiation item with the teachers association. But, um, yeah, there are some options there.
And the other piece I took away was that parents want to know when we're ending school this year because we are having the remote learning days. So they're feeling like we've added too many days. Is that a takeaway you guys took too? I mean, I'm the one who's blabbermouth here, but having read some of the comments, it was, they want to know, there was one parent specifically wants to know when we're ending school because they're feeling like we've extended the year too long.
What I, what I've heard is because we started school 15 minutes earlier or whatever, just that added time into the school day adds up over the course of a school year. So how many days is that, should that take off at the end of the school year? That's what I heard.
Right.
But is it an earlier?
We talked about snow days and we discussed it before, but now they're not having snow days. They're having remote days.
I mean, we could have snow days. It depends on the conditions.
I think the kids don't mind the remote, do they? I mean, you.
Oh, it worked out well.
First preschool doesn't do anything.
No, he gets to stay home, so I'm happy.
Yeah.
High school.
They, they don't go and go with me. We don't do that.
High school definitely has.
Because they're at 990. So.
The graduation date is affected by that.
Well, we've been talking about ending the, the year earlier in our previous meeting. So that's where the conversation started. Because we did increase 25 minutes of their day as academic at time.
Their academic time, right.
And I think had we known that we were, so I was under the impression that when we voted on the calendar, it was an 8:05 start time. And then we voted on the calendar and then we found out right before school started that it was longer. So I think that's why we started talking about it. And the conversations since September were that the academic time now has increased. Therefore, our day of last day of school should be moved up if we're not using snow days. Well, not using snow days, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say that. I meant like, um, we're not, it's, right now we're not. But the last day of school would be earlier if we, by three days.
So do we count minutes or do we count days? That's the thing.
Well, and the thing, the other thing is the teacher's, the teacher's contract. I mean, you've also paid.
They're going to be working on underneath five regardless.
So every school board, every year in the spring, gets a report with a, here's a last day of school. We have a calendar that is a prediction. So everyone isn't surprised if we do have school on all those days. And then every board in the spring gets, here's where we are, here's a proposal, have a discussion and vote. Every board, every year, votes in the spring, okay, our last day is this day, based on whatever our experience has been. And this year, I will use the last two weeks as a wonderful example of why I didn't make a recommendation when I saw you on the first Saturday of February. We've had three days of delays and a couple of remote days. Like, I don't know what's going to happen. And it won't be, like, it will be normal for me to come to you at probably your April meeting, but sometime in the spring and say, here's the last day of school for you to vote on.
So there was one parent who wrote the email. If someone could respond to that parent, just say in April, that's when the decision will be made based on how many minutes we've taught and, you know, that kind of thing.
My other concern though is, and I know parents are trying to plan, and I'm not sure what plan means because I'm not sure if they're trying to plan a vacation that day, that week, or, and they don't want their kids to miss school. But I, but my concern are the parents who are working and have planned on their students being in school.
Right. Well, that was my argument when we changed the school time. Like, parents were working and we didn't tell them that we were changing it until like two days before school started.
So going forward, right, so I'm just going to, before I get off track in my head.
Sorry.
So the parents that are working and they think that, for example, our last day is June 17th and they don't have childcare arranged until after June 17th, and then we say, oh, by the way, you're going to be out three days earlier. You know, I, I want to make sure that we hear from all concerned parties. And I don't know if that's another parent survey or I don't know if that's just a blanket open question, but I, I do want to make sure that all parents are thought of. And so, go ahead, sorry.
Well, and that's kind of what I felt with the cha, the change in time. We didn't care about what they thought when we moved it up 25 minutes.
So are you saying other parents have dropped their kids off later than 7:30? Is that what you're saying? Because I thought all the kids were dropped off at 7:30.
It's because the kids were kept in the gym until 7:50. So technically, a parent didn't have to drop off their kid until 7:50 because I had a preschooler that couldn't get into the building until eight o'clock.
Right.
So I waited until the absolute last minute to drop my older kid off. Because why am I going to sit in the parking spot for half an hour from 7:30 to eight? So parents, it's very strict now. If you're not in the building by 7:45, that you're getting a late pass and you're marked as tardy. And then the phone calls start because, hey, your kid's late again. Your kid's late again.
It's not happening to you, Christie.
Sounds very personalized.
No, it's, my kids are on time, but I, it's.
It sounds like a frustrating situation.
Very stringent. You have to be in the building by 7:45. So that backs everything up. Whereas before, there was a lot of leniency in the amount of time that a kid could show up to school and be on time because they didn't have to technically be in their homeroom until 8:05.
So what was the previous?
So it's, it's frustrating because, yeah, did the time really change? Well, the, the stipulations around the time have changed.
That's what I was asking.
And it's become much more strict. So parents are having to make sure that their kids are in the building no later than 7:45. Whereas before, they still had another 15 minutes to blow if a kid didn't want to get dressed or if their work, you know.
So, so last year, kids had to be there, so school didn't start until eight something, but the kids had to be there for 7:30?
No, they could be in the building at 7:30 and then they sat in the gym.
Or had breakfast.
Or had breakfast. And then there was creating a whole bunch of.
Which helps some working parents.
Issues because the kids were bored and fighting or whatever. But technically, you could go into the building at 7:30, but you didn't have to go to your classroom until 8:05. So.
Bus times have not changed.
But. No.
So the 50 or so percent or 60 or whatever it is at the school of kids who ride the buses have always been getting there.
Oh, absolutely.
At 7:30 to 7:40. And then, again, we've found, I asked Debbie to search for this. And if it exists and someone can help, hello, YouTube, please let us know. But Debbie's found no record in board minutes of the board deciding, oh, even though the buses still come at or starting at 7:30, everyone else has extra time and we'll just kind of watch the kids for a half an hour. We just haven't found that. It looks like that is something that happened within the management of the school exclusive of the school board.
And I think it's frustrating because to parents, it's a huge change. Like, the notice to the parents prior to this school year starting was like, two days before the open house, the school day starts, like, you want your kids here by 7:45, the school day starts. And that threw everybody off because it's always been, yeah, we can drop our kids at 7:45 or 7:50 or 8:05. Like, but now you're, you're setting the steps. I'm just saying.
The people who drive their kids to school.
Yeah, and there's a lot of them. Because I don't want my kid, I don't, I can't get my kid on the bus for the time that it comes by my street. It's just too early. It's too early. They need sleep. But, so why bring my kids to school in the morning? I'm just saying, we need to just, any managerial change moving forward, any kind of administrative change that doesn't seem that big of a deal, we need to make sure that we let all stakeholders know with plenty of time so that way they can prepare for it. Because it was a shock.
We need an improvement in communication.
And it's just because not everybody knew what the rules were or what it was or things went by the wayside and we just, they just did what they wanted to do in years past. Okay, cool. But it did change and it changed a lot. And we need to make sure that we let parents know.
So Christie, is there a way to make it less frustrating? I mean, is there, is there, is there a happy medium? Is there some way to still provide the str, because I, I hear the need for the structure and supervision?
It's just how it was communicated or not communicated, and that's what's the hard part. And that's what I mean, is moving forward with any kind of change, we need to give parents and, I mean, the teachers knew, I guess, but we need to make sure that parents and teach, their kids know that there's going to be a change coming. You know, rather than it being two days before the open house and then it's like, what?
And I think parents right now ask, are saying to themselves, they're asking themselves, why are you asking me now? You changed the first day of school and last year and you didn't care. And you changed the start time of the school and you didn't care about my opinion. Why now? And I think that's what's driving this, you know, ruffling feathers and driving these emails in.
Why, why can't the school open at 7:30? The classrooms open at 7:45 and the school starts at eight, where that gets kids out of the cafeteria.
It's a lot.
That's about, it's about where we are. And that's what our elementary school has always done.
Right, but they can't get there after 7:45 right now.
Yeah, so they start their morning meetings at 7:45-ish, right around that time.
And they take their attendance at that time. So if you're late, then you go directly to the office, you get a late pass and then you're marked tardy.
So that's where it gets a little weird for me.
But 7:45 versus eight, it's not that big of a deal, seriously.
Well, advisory starts.
7:45 till what, 8:10?
8:10, till 8:10.
Because that's where, why wouldn't attendance be taken at 8:10 or whatever?
So advisory is from 7:45 until 8:10.
I can answer that question. I can answer that question.
Yeah.
Because the day we don't realize a child isn't in school whose parents think the child is in school for 45 minutes, they're going to want to know why we didn't know 45 minutes ago. That's the answer to that question.
Yeah, but don't you have that issue when you like drop them off at 7:30 and then you still don't take attendance till 7:45? There's still a 15 minute. So it's still.
And to answer your question, Lauren, I think that, you know, why start now with asking parents? Well, why not?
I'm, I'm not saying that.
Well, she's being facetious.
Yeah.
I think what happened was parents didn't before. They complained. So now we're trying to do it, but.
Right. And that's, and, you know, I feel like we're trying to accommodate people. We're trying to be helpful. We're trying to have the best interest of students. We're trying to have the best interest of teachers. We're, and, you know, we're getting a lot of pushback and that doesn't feel great.
We started talking about the time change because of ending the school year earlier. So we still have now 25 minutes of academic instructional time added on to the calendar, added on to our school day. And parents are asking about ending.
So what we're saying now is that we'll make the decision at our April meeting is what Tim is saying. So based on all the snow days, well, a parent asks that now, just say, in April during our school board meetings and certainly give us input in between if you'd like.
Yeah.
But we're gonna be making the decision in April. I think it's a pretty simple response.
And please come to the April meeting.
There, there is another thing to think about here for you, the five elected members of Alton's School Board. Parents in New Hampshire have a huge amount of authority to call their kids out from school. So it's not necessarily a bad thing if a family says, I recognize that the public school is available today, but my kids aren't coming. That's, parents in New Hampshire have a tremendous amount of authority to excuse their kids from going to school. So you might think about, are there families in the community who would view more days or more time of education as a good thing? And should they be able to have it while others can choose not to? Just another way to think about it.
Except in high school, of course.
I know, I was just thinking of the truancy report at the same time you were saying that. I don't know the situation.
Yeah, we like, we like to encourage attendance, but at the end of the day, families in New Hampshire have a lot of.
Well, and certainly families that are planning a vacation, so.
Right.
That's, we, you know, we support the parent choice there.
Go on vacation.
Well, so why can't we say, all right, our tentative last day of school is June thirteenth and our snow day dates will be June eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, or whatever it is? And then in April, we don't have to vote on anything because we, if we do not have snow days.
Are you looking at the present?
I don't have. Twice rather than make the change in April.
Yeah, but I, I think that's a way we could do it.
So that it.
Cause what, so what are we at for with this draft?
This is, this is next year.
This isn't this year. This is next year.
Right, so that's why it's confusing. It's like to have this in front of you, it's almost like you don't wanna look at it.
We do not calculate hours in next year's calendar.
No.
We never have.
What about this year?
We, we usually don't calculate, we do it all in one day when we get to that day in April where we're figuring out where we stand.
Okay, so we'll have hours for that?
Yeah, we figure it out. That, when I make a recommendation about the last day of school, we'll know. Every year, that's not new.
Yeah, just cause.
That's not because of this discussion. That's what we do.
Cause I think it just goes back to with that earlier start time. Again, that's, this is what I've heard, is just that earlier start time, people wanna get out of school earlier on the back end. So that, that's just where I.
I think they're going to get out early. I think what they don't wanna hear is that we don't wanna make the decision now. They wanna make it in April after having gone through, you know what it's been like the last couple of weeks. And happily, we didn't lose electricity. But if you lose electricity, you can't do a remote day. So then it becomes a snow day. And there were plenty of parents on Facebook saying, I'm just gonna call my kid out and let him have a snow day. So don't be a do it.
Well, I also think it's important to recognize that there is an election coming up. And having to wait after we've been talking about this since August when this happened is a little unfair.
Oh.
To wait until, just what if Ann doesn't, you know, what if we have two new members who haven't been a part of our discussion now and their first meeting, they're voting on this calendar?
Well, I mean, I don't know. That's the way it's always been.
Every year.
Every year, I mean.
But we can make a motion tonight to change the calendar as we've been discussing and then.
I think the administration's uncomfortable with that. That's the problem.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
We can't change it now because we haven't talked to the ATA about it either. I mean, we haven't arranged anything.
I mean, like we've told you, if you tell them they're working less, they won't object. They will get paid.
So you're saying by the time we come back in April, you're gonna have talked to everybody that we need to and all, every, all the ducks are gonna be laid out and then we can just vote?
For next year's calendars.
For the end of this year's last day of school, based on the increased twenty-five minutes of the school calendar.
Yeah, we do that every year.
Right, so I'm saying that's what we'll be, you'll be ready to have for.
And I don't anticipate new members not going along with it.
And it may, it might be made some years, but I'm understanding you wanna do it in April. I, I don't think, we're not likely to get some sort of.
We did last year.
I know.
And we may, we may even do the other year's calendar too.
So approval of the next year's calendar, if you go back through meeting minutes, April, 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 April. If you look at our current calendars, they were approved last April. I start reading drafts.
So in April twenty twenty-five, we are going to have the end of the school year.
But, but the end of school year discussion, if you went back through the minutes, I'm not sure you would always find that in April.
But I think we should, you should do it in April.
But we can certainly bring it to you this year.
Right, so this year in April on, wait for it.
So you're gonna add that to the agenda.
But I'm not talking about this new calendar. I'm talking about.
April, yeah.
Okay.
So it's gonna be.
Yep, it can be decided.
Cause more often than not.
Is it the twenty-first?
High school graduation.
The thing I tried to introduce tonight that I wanna just encourage you all to at least give a minute of thought to in the next two months is that you are the public body responsible for the public schools. Making public schools available does not compel every child to be present every day. Making the decision to close the public school denies its availability to those who might have wanted it.
Or need it.
I understand that.
Just something to think about. You're, you're ultimately gonna vote and do what you do.
I, I definitely understand that. I think we can have discussions about that going forward, whether it's that last week or last two weeks of school looks a little bit different, not so more homework and things like that, but more so, you know, community building, more teamwork types of things.
They love their field day, they love their end of.
Right.
If you start adding those in towards the end of the school, like, I would be open to that. But right now, I lean towards, they start school earlier, more minutes, more hours in, I think they should get out of school earlier.
I think that's what they're gonna propose in April is my impression.
Yeah. So when are we meeting in April? What's our April date? Just so that everyone's really clear.
I'm supposed to sign something.
Okay, April twenty-first. Okay.
Is that school, no, that's not school vacation.
I'm sorry.
Nope. Nope.
It's the following week.
It was, it was the school.
Yeah, but where is the form?
I'm gonna put it in my calendar, whether I'm here or not.
And I just wanna say, I think seven thirty in the morning actually accommodates working parents more than they realize that they are starting work early.
I understand that. Me personally, I, I would choose to start, the school start time later. But I do understand where some people could like it earlier.
Now, how will that affect, well, you'd have to go to a non-public. I have some questions about what you had mentioned, so I will ask them now.
Do you wanna move on for now to the policies and then do you wanna?
I just had one quick question about the proposed option to, so we added an extra day.
I, I, I told Debbie, until you figure out what you wanna do, let's do a hundred eighty day calendar and stop messing around with the other days. Because it's clear to me that you're going to decide how many days you want on the calendar. The, the regulation says start at a hundred and eighty, so we're starting at a hundred and eighty and you're going to decide what you wanna do.
Okay, cause your original draft had.
I know, but I'm done.
Okay, I just.
I'm done trying to decide, trying to predict what's going to happen. You, you are going to tell us and we're gonna do it.
You're the strong voice. Okay. So we have policies, right? So we're gonna move on from the Alton Central School calendar until April twenty-first. We have policies which we just went over in our previous meeting.
Yeah, these are first readings of the same policies, not the graduation requirements, cause that's only high school policy.
Could I have a motion for first reading, please?
Who wants to read all those policies?
As written.
All right.
I, I make a motion, accept these policies, first reading as written.
Beautiful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public input. Seeing none? Closed. Future agenda items. Number one.
So why does it say March seventeenth for the next meeting date?
I think we had considered that, but we're going to meet in April. We usually do not meet in March. All right, so future agenda items are calendar and is there anything else?
Last day of school.
Yes, calendar slash last day of school. Sorry, I was lumping that together.
What about the, um, proposed bus contract?
It, we're going into procurement and it'll depend on if it's fat.
Have, have they talked about the high school impact if they do the reversal? Remember, we talked about that? What kind of impact would it have? Cause they, they're sending kids over here for games and pro- like, I know last night Barnes and Alton played here, the kids did. So how does that switch? That's just something that has to be considered when you switch the times, who gets picked up first, that's all. As I said, I know that a lot of the boys, girls, you know, in the high school take a bus to the j- local gym.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, so I haven't heard, I've heard a couple of different calendar conversations and I think I understand them. I have not heard a serious conversation about actually changing arrival time at the elementary school next year. That would have ramifications in our transportation country.
Right.
And that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We need to, we need to.
So if that's, I would call that a third discussion. If that's one you plan to have or want to have, we do need to.
When do you go into negotiations with the bus company?
Oh, we're writing that in.
So we'll need to know now.
I don't think it'll change, cause last year, what, they took attendance at eight-ten? And then this year, they take attendance at seven forty-five and the bus has been the same. So whether, as long as we land somewhere in between there, we'll change the bus.
For kids who take the bus, nothing has changed.
Right. Well, Eric wasn't at our last meeting, so he didn't hear what you were, your proposal.
We talked about ending the school day earlier so that the teachers would have more common planning time at the end of the day. So they can meet for PLCs, they can meet for, right? Is that right?
Yeah, we're gonna go into non-public also.
Okay.
So.